Like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me be chief pan.
Evening.
You're closest to the paper. Anyone signed up to speak?
I don't know.
But they're um.
Something with the man.
That's what I was.
Very funny guy.
Start the clock. There's three minutes.
Yeah, start the clock. Ready? Hi, guys. I just come to say thank you for everything. I had enjoyed. I enjoy myself working 22 years here. I've gone to many trustees and everything, but it's been a blast. I'm gonna miss it. My blood can't cure. But to tell you the truth, unfortunately, something has come up with my health. And I'm gonna be here, but next week I will start my long process of. So it's gonna be a long road. So I'm not sure if I feel better to come and see you guys or whatever, but you can text me. Maybe I'll answer. Maybe I won't. How I feel.
Or she likes you.
Yeah.
Now our feelings, now our true feelings are coming.
Maybe, you know, we can do a launch or something, but you know, let's not be strangers, you know? I got the town behind me. I put that out there and everybody was yes. So we're gonna postpone my party until next year, hopefully in June, if everything goes right. But I will miss everybody. So.
We'll miss you. This is not the way that we wanted to.
This is not the way I wanted to retire. No, but unfortunately, I got to care myself.
You could have just said September 1st. You didn't have to. It was a whole thing to get out of it. Right?
I know. I know. Okay, well, I will let you guys go to your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have heard, just for the record, you guys have heard blame for being sitting here. I've never admitted that in public, but she, her and Bill Schmidt were the ones that got me involved in this whole mess. And so she's the reason that I'm here. And I don't know why she put up with me all these years. I don't know why she stuck with it all these years.
Don't blame.
I can't. I just can't. Anyway, sorry.
All right.
Next, we have, we have one more.
Oh, one more.
We have Cynthia Rappan.
Thanks for keeping me on track.
Okay. Hello. Hello. Hello, trustees, President Reed, village staff. My name is Cynthia Rappan, and thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. Trustees, you have a vote on your agenda in two weeks to decide whether to annex the light properties north and south of Dietrich Road into the Village of Hampshire and rezone them as an OM office and restricted manufacturing district to allow the proposed use of a logistics facility. I'm sure you are aware that there has been public outcry against this rezon. Since January, hundreds of residents in the area have attended planning and zoning commission hearings and spoken out against a logistics facility near their homes. Now we are counting on you to make a zoning decision that protects public health and safety. The trouble with this application is that by requesting rezoning without a specific development plan, the petitioner can avoid providing evidence that there will not be a detriment to public health and safety. If there was a development plan, the village would have a traffic study, a sound study, a health study, and so on. Without a site plan, just a conceptual plan, none of that has been done here. I am asking you from the bottom of my heart, please do your due diligence now when you are considering annexing and rezoning this property. Please request the types of studies that you would normally review when considering a development plan. Here's what I need. The conceptual plan for the property suggests millions of square feet of warehousing that would be served by hundreds of semi trucks moving in and out of the property potentially 24 hours a day. This will create a lot of noise. Yet the village does not have a sound ordinance that I know of and needs a sound study of the proposed use to assess if it can meet the Illinois Title 35 sound requirements. A noise study could provide important information about a logistics facility at that site and important mitigation measures that could be included in the annexation agreement. Even the petitioner's lawyer, Mr. Bernie, pointed out at the last PNZ hearing that it would be within your ambit to require that they establish they are going to meet Title 35 for the particular use that they are asking for. To my knowledge, a sound study has not been done. How will the intersection of Dietrich Road and Route 20 support hundreds of semi trucks turning left where there is currently no turn lane? If this is not studied now, then the village will not know what specific traffic issues and improvements may be required to prepare Dietrich Road and Route 20 to support the proposed use. And the village could miss the opportunity to protect itself from shouldering those expenses by addressing its zoning decisions and the annexation agreement. I urge the village to request a traffic study of the proposed use. We know that the Kane Page County land use opinion is that the property is poorly suited for industrial zoning for various reasons. The McHenry County portion of the north property contains a creek and wetlands and is designated by McHenry County as highly sensitive for aquifer recharge. Most of the nearby private wells, including mine, are only 50 to 60 feet deep. Furthermore, hundreds of semi truck trips through the area each day will release significant diesel air pollution that will affect nearby homes, schools, and businesses. For these reasons, I urge you to request a health impact assessment of the proposed use of a logistics facility again, so that you understand the risk of public health and include important protections for nearby neighborhoods in the annexation agreement. The petitioner has given the funds, the village funds, to evaluate the application. Please consider using those funds to contract for professional sound, traffic, and health impact studies before you vote to rezon the property as an OM office and restricted manufacturing district. My neighbors and I will be living with the effects of this rezoning for the next 30-plus years. Please take a little more time now to make sure that OM makes sense for our community. In closing, I am not against progress or development. I am not opposed to the landowner and the village making money from developing and annexing the property. In fact, my only real concern with OM zoning is the permitted use of warehousing and distribution facilities because that will bring a significant amount of semi trucks, noise, traffic, and pollution. It's about the number of trucks. It's always been about the trucks. On the other hand, I do support the property being rezoned as a business district like an OR, Office Research District, or a business park, as is envisioned in the village's future land use plan. Please take the time to evaluate professional assessments of the proposed use. If logistics cannot be done safely at this site, then I hope that you will vote no on the current application. And perhaps the petitioner can come back with an application for business district zoning, allowing the village to attract the kinds of businesses and revenue that will truly benefit the residents of our community. Thank you so much for your attention, consideration, and service.
Very much.
Sure. I got my crosshairs on it.
You can email it to us afterwards. We just think.
Okay.
Respectful notice.
Okay.
If you'd like to email it after the fact.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay, thank you.
All right. Before you view the meeting minutes from August 17, 2023, please review them at this time. Any changes to the minutes? As you can see, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 17, 2023, as presented.
So moved.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Koff?
Hi.
Mr. Rob?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
And Ms. Futter?
Hi.
Pass six zero.
Next, we have the motion to approve the reappointment of Ms. Karen Traska to the Business Development Commission. She served on the commission. She had one full term under her belt at this time. She is a trusted resource and also a part of a business that's here in town. Pretty involved with the day-to-day operations, so she seems like a good fit and is interested in serving again. Do you have any questions about Ms. Traska?
Yeah, my only question is, she's on the BDC of Carpentersville currently. Is that a conflict of interest of any kind?
No, that actually brings another perspective to our BDC because they're a much larger organization, been around a little bit longer.
But she shared, like, when we had discussions of properties and when we were talking about the usage of, like, outside Oakstead of that new, we tried to have it second downtown type area. She had some good input of things that they faced or discussions that they had. So it's helped a little bit, but there's no competition between great businesses.
Okay. If she was not here angry, I think that might present a problem. So you want to send your conclusions? I'll entertain a motion to approve reappointment of Karen Traska for a three-year term. Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Koff?
Hi.
Mr. Rob?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Futter? Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Pass six zero.
Good evening, Mr. Hedges.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have before you an ordinance for many various sections of Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code, Hampshire, of 1985, regarding electric vehicle charging stations within the Village of Hampshire, Kane County, Illinois. You have before you an agenda supplement prepared by Mr. Ray. You also have an ordinance of many various sections of our code. Josh and I have been involved with this organization how long since now?
Six months.
Yeah, six months. And it gives us an opportunity. It's called EV readiness, and it's sponsored by the Mayor's Council in Chicago. And we've been attending EVs, and Josh has done most of the work. What this does is simply make our village ready. If electric vehicle charging stations become the real, the next, our future, then we'll be ready. We're not doing anything other than letting them go and do that. Just ask your consideration.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hedges or Mr. Ray about this, these proposed changes?
We have two businesses that received grants to put in EVs, so this is, this is for known projects. This would affect known projects.
Yeah, they, well, they've already, they've already be eligible. This is, so let me say, you can still, you can already do it. This will just make it smart. This will make our code available so that it's in the code and it doesn't have to refer to other sections of the code. It may not, it were written before electric vehicles existed. So there's not a problem with them doing that now. This will just make it easier.
Do you have questions or discussions?
Yes. There was, it says that, well, I know there was a public hearing that came in. Evidence was presented, et cetera. But then it said that nobody came to it. So nobody, there were, what evidence was presented during this hearing? To approve this?
Well, like most of our planning and zoning commission meetings, it's members themselves and the members of the public become. But Josh presented the recommendations and that's what they voted on.
So there was no evidence that was actually presented. It was just?
I'm not sure what you mean by evidence.
Well, it says that. At the hearing testimony was given, evidence was presented, comments were solicited. I get the comments were solicited.
It's actually the same information you have in your pack that was presented to.
To them. Okay. Let's see, page 17 for permitted obstructions for yards. I just a question for number B4, the five foot to any lat line. I just was curious, is that just the basic that we do for other things? And we just followed that?
That's, that's correct. It's for standard for other types of things, other than fences, really.
Mr. Paul Street, what you're looking at, can I just, Mr. Kelly, I just want to add, yes, if this ordinance is in place, they will use, they will take advantage of it. I didn't want to imply that they wouldn't. So yes, it'll take that.
This specifically calls out other standards that didn't exist in 1985. Go clean yourself because of date.
You know how often we do this, or staff does as a template, was this, were these changes taken from existing ordinances for other, other communities? And if so, which communities?
I would say that the 16, I think, for entities in the Metro Mayor's kind of collectively through multiple workshops. We had a workshop every week for probably four months, went through different sections of the program and collectively came up with language for this. So I think one of the communities, I'm sorry, I don't know the suburbs very well, but I think it was maybe our, already had some ordinances on file. Most of the rest of us were creating almost this from scratch.
So then is, is it safe to say that the other communities that part of that program aren't instituting these same exact this language?
I would not say exactly. I mean, their codes are all different. So for example, the definition sections look wildly different between codes, surprisingly. And they might be adding different definitions than us, but I would say if I could characterize it as the spirit of the changes are all, are all the same.
And we were, what, the first of how many communities? The first, like you said, 16?
Fourteen.
Fourteen cohort, right? And then they just announced the second cohort as well. And so was another thing?
And there were some people that were turned away from the second cohort because it wasn't. And this is a no way advocating for it. It just means if five years from now, the state comes out with grants, we'll be more prepared than that.
Yeah, I'll just add that other communities are doing even more than this. I mean, they are changing out their fleets on amortization. Scheduled to change out their fleets for electric vehicles. They're doing these assessments to add charging stations to their facilities and that kind of thing for the higher levels of certification as an EV-ready community. And at this time, we were doing the lower level of certification by just changing the code and making it so that it's more clearly, more transparently permitted.
Yeah, there's different levels of this. Josh went through it at not our last meeting, me before.
Yeah, we had a whole presentation here.
Yeah, I remember in our last, he spoke about what the cohort was about and some of the goals that we had as, some of the goals of the big board and the mayor's caucus, and some of the goals that we're looking to go after. And we're, again, we were just trying to clean this up because there's no reference to electric vehicle charging stations in the code written in 1985. Right. Nice one. I like that. Did you do that purpose? Shocking. Any other questions, Miss Paul Street?
Yeah. Informational signs should be posted at EVC stalls, designating the stall as an EVC S stall, warning of potential enforcement actions such as towing. So I, I thought of blocks as an example. If, if they have 5% of their stalls then become EVC S. It's for customer use only. From what you've understood, I've understood that only those that are charging can be in those stalls. So if blocks choose to do that, blocks loses those stalls for other customers.
Correct.
Correct. And then does it, is it, does it have to be customer use only? So the neighbors across the street decide parking their stall just to be able to get the electric?
That's, I would say that's not addressed by the code, so that would be up to blocks to post, you know, their own enforcement signs for customers. So many of the judges.
So it'll be on the business to do that.
Most businesses don't have parking or parking, but if you're not using your business or subject to.
No.
It has to be posted.
Well, so like.
Overnight.
But like, but like right now, if you go in front of blocks, it says blocks customer only on all of their spaces.
Yeah.
So if they choose to put up charging stations and only allow it for electric vehicles, that's a choice that they made.
Right?
It's no different than the blocks only parking on their parking spaces.
So do the police then enforce? Because it says it's subject to enforcement?
They would have to be asked on the property, if I'm not mistaken. You guys can't just pick a vehicle and invite a parking lots.
Not for, yeah, just me.
That's it. So the enforcement is truly on the side of the business only, except for.
Unless, unless, of course, we take in, put up charging stations on State Street for the same reason. And they would be out, like, if they would, if the village at some point would want to put in spaces, which we're not talking about doing. But if, if we were to put in chargers, then we would enforce our, our spaces.
Are there local towns around us that have village stations?
Nobody can really afford it right now because there's not, like, in our area, there's not enough power downtown for them to do that.
We have, we have two stations right here in Hampshire up at Dietrich.
She was talking about municipal spaces.
Yeah.
So, so typically, that's why you don't see a whole lot of them in the municipal spaces because they cost money to do. And a lot, and what I've seen, like, down toward the city, and I don't know what the ins or outs of this are, but I know that they're like privately owned charging stations that are installed on municipal property. So like, again, I don't think that the village, I mean, I think that they partner with somebody and then they put in their stations and then the company's making.
Typically, they'll partner with the store, like Tesla partners with Meyer. Because when Tesla gives them to Meyer for free, basically, because if you have it at Meyer and you charge your car at Meyer, you're gonna go shop in Meyer. So Tesla's making out, Meyer's making out, but I haven't seen any.
I don't believe it has one because I've been at their village hall. So I, so I can say I've seen it in one village hall. I just was curious.
You don't have any plans to pull it up on the petition?
No, but I, but it's set up, or if we want to, we could.
Because we looked, we looked at it when we did Streetsave. That was an initiative of the BDC at the time of trying to find ways to integrate, be prepared for the power needs and that kind of thing.
Well, we thought it would draw on customers, definitely. If because if you come down to charge, you figure it's a 40-minute, 30 to 45 minutes. I mean, there's superchargers being built now, but 30 to 45 minutes, the BBC felt that somebody that plugs in a charger will come down the street and shop. Would have been great to have near, like, with the train station there, but we don't have the electric infrastructure down here right now.
So we looked into it. It's gonna be almost $75,000 with the charger and about almost $100,000 just to bring power to it. This is, I don't know.
I know last time when we talked about this, I asked what the need was, and I understand that we're doing this in advance. But, you know, the ordinance is peppered with things like the great demand for it. And I just think about Hampshire and I don't, no one's ever mentioned that we need to get these. So I understand we're doing it in Pratt, but I just don't see this great demand.
I think after they build 1,900 new homes out west, there'll be plenty of demand.
I, I, I got a couple of people to your phone. I've asked, not just a couple, but several people have asked.
Hand hand farms. Look how many new houses went up there. The demand's gonna come.
And the fact of the matter is, is if the industry, if the automotive market in our industry is forced to change like it's poised to do, we're gonna, it's either we get involved now and be ahead of it, or we do it after the fact and find a way to pay for it. Right now, we're getting a lot of free help from ComEd and other municipalities not trying to reinvent the wheel.
And I would hate to quote. So people are gonna try their EV where they can't charge. So you're gonna take.
Just as a side, as a side note, that being in the solar business, residential customers now and moving forward, they're, and not just residential, commercial, industrial, but people that are getting older in homes are being questioned and asked, what are your future needs? And they are including extra solar to cover those that want to have maybe future electric cars. And I have one person here who has an electric car, put it in here for me the other day. I haven't paid one cent for my car because it's covered with my solar in my house. So this is a common thing that's being that people are going to.
Mr. Ray, one question for you. On page 18, it states, one of the changes was in reference to front yards. It says open accessory off-street parking spaces. The new addition is, and spaces for electric vehicle charging stations shall be permitted in the front yard in certain districts subject to and as provided in section 612 of the code. That section of this code is not included in your sewage districts. That is, that's M1, M2, and M3. I think it was last year, perhaps the year before, that the village board passed a tax amendment to allow for front yard parking in those industrial districts. That was being requested by several companies at the time. So that's, those are the three.
So not OM or any other areas?
It's because you said OM. I'll check, but I'm pretty sure it's 1, 2, and 3.
Okay.
I'll pull it up rather.
Ms. Stuhler, now that you're in the crowd here.
He answered it and went to an end. He answered the question.
Awesome. Any other concerns about this? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 23-09, amending the various sections of Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code, 1985, regarding electric vehicle charging stations. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rob?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Futter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Koff?
Hi.
Pass five.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance proposing enlargement of special service area number 21 in the Village of Hampshire and providing for public hearing and other procedures in connection with here with Crown Oakstead subdivision. Excuse me. This is the expansion of an existing special service area to include the additional homes that were added to that platform that was amended two years ago. And you have also a map, excuse me for losing my train of thought, that we also have a map that Trustee Paul Street requested showing you exactly where the expansion of SSA is. It's an existing, simply a expansion.
Does anybody have any questions?
I, I want to just, so that I have it clear in my head. Everything else on that map, all the other homes are already in an SSA. We are just adding that extra area.
Correct. They're in the same SSA.
Correct. So it'd be one SSA for the entire development.
And it's just a backup SSA. So only if they do not maintain it, we'll never step.
Which reminder for anybody that's watching is mandated by Kane County laws.
Any questions?
In those particular areas on that map, were those homes already there, I mean, that was part of the Oakstead land unit development that they had?
Well, there are no homes there yet. They're just lots.
Okay, but then was that like a redrawing of the map? That's?
Yes, it was, it was replating. They, they reorganized the plat to change the plot. So, so whatever what we did with Prairie Ridge just described.
Okay, okay. I just wasn't sure since I was in the area, I just in my head, I kept thinking it was just a small proportion, but those, the houses are home. Yeah, in that area. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 23-10, an ordinance proposing the enlargement of SSA number 21.
Over.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to thank Minister Hedges and for getting that.
Sure.
For sure.
I think helping for all this. With that, I'm sorry, did you call the roll?
Yep.
I was saying, with that, we would ask.
Wait, can I, can I?
You gotta call the roll.
Can I, can I?
He's just asking.
You call the roll. We, we did step one. All right. Can I do step two now?
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Futter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Koff?
Hi.
Mr. Rob?
Hi.
Pass six.
Hey, now, next time, let's see.
With that, we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve the bond reduction for public improvements at Big Timber Elementary School in the amount of $223,600.53 to the amount of $174,347.27, which brings the bond down to 10% of the original bond, which was $1,700, blah, blah, blah. We would ask your consideration of this since Mr. Paulson is online and you have all the documentation.
Good evening, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Paulson?
Is there anything outstanding in this project? I mean, kids are already in school there.
No, it's just a 10% reduction. I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Everything is complete. We're, you know, working through the final inspections and punch lists to certify the public improvements, hopefully bring those forward for acceptance later this year.
Wait, what? Sorry. Walk me through why it's gonna take through later this year to do final evaluation of a school the kids are already in.
It's, it's.
What's left remains?
Uh, there's mainly items to do with the detention basin, some erosion that needs to be repaired in the detention basin. A few repairs to the grouting on a couple of storm sewer structures is a few small items in the, in the roadway. The storm sewer structures in the roadway.
Things that had already been certified and passed, but they have since in this time now require repair?
Either required repair or in a couple of cases, you know, something was missing, like there's a storm structure that they didn't finish the grouting on. So that's on the punch list. They need, their contractor needs to come back and finish up these couple items.
Okay, but nothing to the building itself or the grounds?
Nothing to the building. Just, this is just for the public. Nothing to the building, just, this is just for the public improvements, nothing to do with the school building or the school site itself.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't had rain for months, they should be done. Any other questions, comments? All entertaining motion to approve the bond reduction. Questions, comments, concerns? Mister Deputy Clerk? Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Futter?
Aye.
Mister Kelly?
Aye.
Mister Coe?
Aye.
Mister Ma?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Motion pass six zero. Next, you have the streets report. Trustee Coe, do you wanna walk us through that, or do you want us to just read it?
Just read it.
Okay, there's a building report as well. Is there anything special you'd like to add, Mister Ray?
We have a lot of permits.
Okay, so read over the two reports, and if there are questions, you put them all towards Trustee Ma.
At least he's listening. For the building. For the building report for August, for other village fees collected, it was two-hundred-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-three, which is forty percent of the entire year. So I was just curious, what are some of those fees collected?
Those are the impact and transition fees that come to the village, as well as probably a couple of connection fees for a commercial project or two. It's basically everything that we collect outside of a permit fee, but it does not include the fees for the other tax entities, just the villages.
This is just like, it's just a huge month because it was August.
Fifty new home permits and thirty-two new townhomes.
Okay, because the average is, you know, fifty thousand, one hundred, and it was two thousand.
Yeah, it was the highest month, we were having about sixty permits a year, and we're probably three hundred this year.
Wow, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
In the builder report, we have elective, eleven active cases for code enforcement right now, correct?
We average seven, so I guess this is not that much higher.
Many of these came in this week, there are, most of them coming through the app, which is great, but.
Do we know what they are? Like type, like what types of?
Most of them this time of year are tall grass, believe it or not, grass is still growing even without rain, if you collect it long enough, most of it has to do with that, some of it, building maintenance. We have one particular property over on Industrial Drive that we've been on pretty good, they cleaned it all up once, and now they let it grow through the eye again. But our, our program is working, and residents are helping, some of you at this table are helping, other departments are helping, and some of us are helping.
Thank you. Okay, staff reports. Next, we have the motion to approve the accounts payable of personnel, there is a handout. A, that is not for the personnel. So the personnel one. Second page, oh, sorry, it is in the back here. All right. Ninety-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Does anyone have any questions about the ninety-four, ninety-three dollars and fifty-four cents? If there are none, I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable of personnel in the amount of ninety-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Questions, comments, concerns? Mister Deputy Clerk, can you call a roll, please? Ms. Futter?
Aye.
Mister Kelly?
Aye.
Mister Coe?
Aye.
Mister Ma?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Pass six zero. Next, regular accounts payable, two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents.
Page ten.
Page ten.
Second from the bottom. Raymar Allwood.
Oh, I thought you were down with O V P.
Would you like for me to answer that?
Please, go right ahead.
Um, so, Raymar Allwood provides the sound services at the planning and zoning committee meetings when they're held at the school.
Okay, thank you.
And those costs are covered by whoever is petitioning that required them?
That's accurate, yes.
Resulted in that.
Correct. Are we gonna be anticipating those costs on the next one, with our next meeting ahead?
Yes.
And that's already gonna be, okay. Any, any cost of doing anything for that project that would be outside the village's everyday operations?
It's still bank debt, except for staff, except for staff, right? We can figure out how to do that someday.
One question on page eleven, which, one ninety-nine South State.
Uh, it's the garden area.
So that is considered a hundred percent complete, is that?
Complete, there are two conditions we're gonna hold to check. I could go slow with advice, the only two things remaining is that vent on the front, if you could call, and then the garbage enclosure on the back. And the contractor will be completing those either tomorrow or next week, the check will not be released until. Mister Ramadani called just today, he'll be up, actually, we're gonna watch your garden area next week. I don't think he's been in there since.
Any other questions? All right, entertaining motion to approve the regular accounts payable in two, in the amount two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents.
So move. Second.
The second and third, Mister Deputy Clerk, can you call a roll, please? Mister Kelly?
Mister Coe?
Aye.
Mister Ma?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Futter?
Aye.
Motion pass six zero. All right, everybody's favorite time, new business, other announcements?
No village committee, really, or anything?
I got excited, I looked at the clock and I said, we're gonna get done in forty-five minutes, maybe not. Business development commission?
Yeah, I've got some, page one.
Up twelve.
We're gonna meet on next Wednesday, regular time, regular location. Discuss things the BDC discusses.
Excellent report.
I have a question for the BDC.
Yes, sir.
With the growth that we're gonna be experiencing and are in the middle of experiencing, along with growth comes crime. Everybody can look at the figure growth, when they first started, they had, they had their hands full for a while. Would the BDC be can consider using some of the facade money and offering cameras up and down to all the businesses? For the ones that have older cameras, updating the cameras, for the ones that don't, getting them cameras, and let's camera to hold downtown.
Yeah, I'd like to answer that into four parts, if I may. No, I think that's a great suggestion, it's not excluded from a facade grant, and it is a part of the front facing of the building, and so if a applicant were to put in to include cameras.
No, no, I'm asking the BDC, go to all the businesses and, and use, you know, get a price on cameras, we need thirty of them, it's gonna be four grand, can we go?
So that's, no, so you bring up a good point there, that was something discussed at one of the BDC meetings, was we have a budget allocated of a hundred K that the village board approved. The question had come up, well, what if we don't get a hundred thousand worth of applications? Could the BDC actually recommend projects for downtown? Things we talked about were like the cannoli reliance, as we had hoped for as a part of the state street. And so I think something like that could be a consideration, it would still be up to the private business owner if they wanted to, unless we're installing cameras on poles or things like that, then it would be in conjunction, conversation with the police department, what would be the right way to go about that? But I think that's two different avenues, right? One is, we're with local businesses to say, we would like to offer you, at no charge, a package that, that provides this, so that if something were to happen, we'd ask that you work with the police to help identify, get that. I think the other option then is, working with the police department, having it be a village initiative, if it's recommended by the BDC.
Well, I just, let me just tell you that Chief Hammond's taking the initiative there, we do have cameras up, so I'd like to explain that, and they're free cameras. For three months, for three months. Once, once they start working, so there, we did have, we started working with a vendor, that they wanted to do a proof of concept here, so there's, so there's a camera, actually, it's back there right now, but it's going to be mounted on the corner of the building up here. Pointed northbound, a, just a bullet camera that'll cover the street, and then there's a camera. I met with the library board a few weeks ago, and they approved putting a camera on the corner of the library building, and that's a three-sixty camera that faces in every direction, and down for that intersection, so. It's only two cameras right now that's covering the downtown area, but they're, they're going through that group of concept, and, you know, if they work then, and they're much more expensive than, I mean, a good quality street camera just, is not, you know, thirty cameras for four thousand dollars, and so you're talking, five thousand for two cameras, you know, and depending on how you get power and connection and all that, it's, it really impacts the cost of the project. But it's definitely something that I support, I think we should do, and that's why we started this trial, just to see. I remember that when the clock went up and, and all the landscaping and everything downtown, wait, now, things are pretty valuable, that at least we don't have graffiti and all that stuff. So now, I've just had my personal rain camera in the front window for about a year now, she's got, had a good video of it, papered, by the way. But now we have real cameras out there, they're police filings, so we have a trial program.
But that, I mean, to your question, though, something like that, or a different use, like if you feel, hey, it would be great for the village to do the cost of this, and it's to improve the area that is covered under the facade program, it was discussed with the BDC that that should be a consideration as well. And it may be where that has a higher priority, then maybe another application.
The good news is, I think we're gonna have more than enough applications, and should be, we have three more. One thing that I would add on that, if, if you do, if you do that, where you, where you're encouraging, or in some way funding, or partnering with businesses to put the cameras up, we, there, there are relatively low-cost pieces of equipment that we can get, that we have access to, that to tie, to actually tie our, like a system in, with all the businesses, so like a business could provide us with the video, and it would, and we could have like one interface that, you know, either, that the village would have somewhere, either the police department or.
I would imagine if we did offer some package like this, it would be a consultation with you and your department to say, what is that package that we should offer? And that would be the, whatever the package would be, because I think that's the purpose of this, right, is to make sure that we can act on whatever may be happening, whether it's vandalism or any type of issue.
It's, right now, our problem is, we have companies that do have cameras, but they don't maintain them.
If I could ask Trustee Coe, just for the parks, I know we've had a lot of ban on this in the parks, are there any cameras out in the parks?
All the park system has all new cameras and everything, so, yep, yeah.
Have we caught anybody from doing something by using it?
God.
Oh, okay, I'm glad, okay, that's good enough.
Trustee Coe, their police department has access?
Not yet, that was supposed to be five years ago, they were supposed to have access to them, so that they could, if they were at the truck stop on a stop, and they got a call about something in the park, they could access it right on their laptop to see what it is. And we need somebody to push that forward.
We can do that, and we were actually already doing that, we, we met with Nathan, who, who, last week, to talk over security issues, and that was one of the topics that come up. And so it's a work in progress, we just.
Yeah, that's came up in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty.
The one thing I can say is that the, the technology platforms and squads are now updated to be able to handle that type of traffic, too.
Any other questions? Okay, you're up, Trustee Coe.
For what?
For the works.
Anybody have, you've got the, the report, they'll start prepping for winter pretty soon, going around, filling around manholes, that sort of thing, catch basins clear. Something that we might wanna do, there's not a, does Bill Rosetti, he does the letter, right?
Yes.
We're getting rash calls on yellow jackets, as soon as people see yellow jackets, there's an S, they, they get all freaked out. Yellow jackets burrow into the ground, that's what they do. We haven't had rain in so long, and I poured concrete in the park yesterday, I had to use steel, because the wood shattered trying to drive a stake into the ground, it's so hard. So the bees are finding alternative areas, mulch mainly, around your house, in bushes, the whole shot. I'd like Rosetti to possibly put something out in a newsletter, so that these people understand what, what's going on.
So I think the newsletter just is gonna get ready to go out, so I missed the deadline, so the next, the next one will be out, but if you can help me get some stuff together, or maybe you and Trustee Robinson can get together, and we'll get something out on social?
And the bee killer that you buy, the twenty-foot spray in the can, does not affect them?
Makes them really mad.
So like, lighting the mulch on fire, is that a good one?
We have alternative methods.
To a rapid.
Answer that as no. No, so, so, so seriously, though, if we give it to Trustee Robinson, and then we come up with some wording or something, and then we'll put it out on social, because we can put it out now.
Then it's the next newsletter.
The next newsletter is already, the deadline's already passed.
Right, but I mean.
November first. November, so there aren't gonna be any yellow jackets then.
Uh, these things are gonna get extremely aggressive in the next month.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, let's put it out on social, then, if we got inside knowledge.
Speaking of the dry weather, I know we contract for three sprays, did we use all three this year?
Yes, sir.
We did?
Yes. And we did that because there was a rash, there were seven cases of West Nile virus. I think three of them were at the Kane-Cook County border. We have a trap behind the Park District building, all the mosquitoes that are trapped in there, none of them have West Nile, but they're the bad ones, they carry all the other diseases. So, yeah, we elected to spray, if it backfires and they get really bad in three weeks, I'll take total blame.
So Trustee Coe works in, in their vendor, environmental, and so we've, we've done, we had this a few times in the past, based on like weather patterns and that, where we've used it. Maybe the spray is, I forget what it costs, I think it's like eight grand or something like that, I don't.
No, no, per, per spray?
Is it like three or four?
No, it's like fifteen for the year, so it's five, forty-eight hundred or something.
Yeah, so, so trustee, or so Village Manager hedges, and I just, when Toby gets a call, and then Clark says, hey, you guys really need to do this because we're catching it, Toby's just gonna make the call.
They have all the monitoring stations, so they call me and let me know.
So, so if you see another spray in here for a charge for car environmental, it's because he made the call that we need to spray.
But the spray kills existing mosquitoes and sterilizes the eggs of the ones not hatched yet. So they'll hatch, but they won't be able to relay.
But back, back when I, when it was in charge, when Public Safety was in charge of the spraying and stuff, it happened a few times, I think it's happened a few times with you as well, but it's when you get seventy, seven days over seventy percent humidity, over seventy degrees, that's what promotes the biggest amount of hatch. And so that's when you notice, like right now, there's not a whole lot, but it was so humid for so long, pretty quick they're gonna be out again. And if that's the case, and they stay catch more of the West Nile, don't be surprised if you see it on the accounts payable. But Toby's well qualified to make that call.
Yeah, we monitor the, the caption cup every day.
Any other questions for public works, public relations?
And they'll start doing a lot of tree trimming soon, too, when leaves fall off and they can get a better sense of what the branches look like, so your trees are all lopsided, and people come out screaming.
Any other questions? Other announcements?
Can I ask a question just to the, the chief? I know it's not the month that you give the report, but if there have been some significant crimes in the village, is there an update that you could go?
We have a, we, well, I mean, considering the, the amount of crimes we normally have, I would say yes, there's been a little, there was an uptick in the last, actually, a couple of weeks ago. We had a night where we had, a couple nights where we had one business, commercial burglary, and then, and we're following up on that, we have, there are actually some leads, and there's out-of-state suspects in that. And then there's a, and then there's another case, or another string of car burglaries, where someone came in from, you know, from outside, and did a series of car burglaries and stole a car, and that car's been recovered in the south side of Chicago, just a few days ago, I don't think it's. Yeah, so yes, that, that did happen.
Just one car stolen?
Yeah.
Believe in the keys in the car. Yeah, as, as you said before, each one of those cars left, unlocked, the one that was stolen actually had the keys in a wallet.
No suspects on that one, then?
We just encourage everybody, it's not making excuses for the criminals or any of that type of stuff that, that you've been accused of, but we try to communicate this message, but leave your car locked if you're gonna leave it outside, especially, don't leave your keys in it, in general, lock your car, take your keys. It's really important, and it's not a matter, it's a matter of, if you look at these crimes, that they come to all of the suburbs, and it's going further and further west, because people have a sense of safety, and not saying the community's not safe, but I mean, it's, it's a, it's a.
Well, the tollway is the thoroughfare from Chicago to Rockford.
I mean, they're, but they're even hitting towns that are off of the tollway, I mean, we've talked to several other mayors in the area, and they're hitting their towns, too, and they're nowhere near the tollway, but these guys.
They're looking for easy targets, they're looking to see if your car is unlocked, if your garage door is left open.
They're gonna stay off by answer for a while, because they know that the police is on them.
But when you hear that, like, in this particular case, it wasn't like gone in sixty seconds, where the dude walks up. But when you hear that, that, like, in this particular case, it wasn't like gone in sixty seconds where the dude walks up like with a computer or like he's trying to break open, I mean, he just walked up, pulled the handle, time of opportunity is what it was, he or she or whoever. But anyway, so just, just lock the cars, that's all I can tell you, lock up your garage doors. Exactly, close your garage.
Thank you, chief.
There was, I, I would just, the, the key, the, the string that happened in December, we know who's responsible for that and, um, even though the, the primary person hasn't been charged in, in Rockford, I mean, in Rockford, well, he hasn't been charged in Rockford, he hasn't been charged here. Um, but that's because he's in custody there and they're in, and our officers have been working with the, um, actually with the, um, federal prosecutors in Rockford to see if they can, whether they're gonna be charged in King County or charged federally, uh, because there was a whole bunch of other crimes involved in it, but this guy's been doing this since he was fifteen years old and that's what he does.
Or did before we got.
Or did, you know, to support himself and brings everyone, you know, his crew along with him, so. It, it is true that those crimes were perpetrated by people outside of.
Okay, well, we'll see everybody on, on twenty-first of September.
And everybody and the public, the next meeting will be at, at your middle school at seven P M on September twenty-ninth.
Twenty-first.
Sorry, twenty-first, and we will have, uh, in addition to, uh, the light project, we'll have other business on that meeting too, so we'll be regularly.
And we're having a, where?
Middle, middle school on September twenty-first at seven P M.
Take a nap in the middle of the day.
And because of that, it will not be available.
Correct. We have, we will have court order and we will expedite the transcription. And it will be posted on our website as soon as we have.
Will we pay for that?
Light is paying for that. Because it's not part of the regular business.
I heard one last plan zoning, uh, the, uh, people that showed up for the public comments, there was a lot of catcalling, cheering and cheering in the, in the audience, uh, is that true?
I would call it catcalling, really, there, there was some response, I would say positive support for some of the folks, maybe negative for others, but there was a little discourse between the petitioner and one or two people in the audience, but I, I would say it was not a, a chair member on King very well.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all very much.
Try for some.